We're good? Yeah. All right, we'll call to order the regularly scheduled school board meeting. First item of business is the approval of the minutes from October 23rd, 2024. Any discussion about those? I will accept the motion to approve the minutes. Thank you, Judge. Thanks, Joe. Any further discussion? All those in favor, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
And that... Oh, I'm sorry, was there any intentions?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. And I will say no as well, because I was not present for that. So that's, but that's okay. Next up is educational focus. Looks like we have literacy team and STEM team. So who would like to go first?
Literacy.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Joanna Bosso. I might be a new face to many of you or some of you I know. My, so I'm new to Linwood this year. I'm not new to education. I've been working in education for almost two decades. My last, I worked at Bethune Elementary School for the last four years, teaching grades K through X. And so our focus right now is really doing a what is happening in literacy right now in Linwood, in Linwood with literacy. So currently, what's been happening is we've had kind of a deep dive.
Yeah, for sure.
Working with two phenomenal instructors, Maureen Watson, teaching the foundational skills of reading, and then at the high school, middle school level.
Dr. Carol Coleman.
Yeah.
Has been in.
And they brought a lot to Linwood in, they've visited, well, Maureen's coming two times to, like Thursday and Friday this week, and that will be her third visit this year.
Carol came last spring. She came early October. She'll be back next week, and then she'll be back, I think, again in the spring. So multiple visits, which is great.
Yeah. And yeah, again, somewhere early. Maureen will also be coming all the way into March at the end. So I think a total of eight visits throughout school year. So what she's been teaching us, and this is actually really interesting. So I've worked K through 12, but really, she's been focusing, Maureen, in elementary school, has been really focusing on the foundational skills of reading. Now, this is, this is decoding, right? Like, how do you read? How do you break down words into their sounds in order to decode, read the word? Okay? You, one would think that this is just implicitly taught, and this is like, oh, we do. Actually, historically, it hasn't been. Okay? There's been some swings in education, like everything, but we are coming out of a phase of what's called guided and balanced literacy, moving back into the science of reading, the decoding of words, and teaching kids how to break down words in order to read them. Now, I've worked in the upper elementary school, and I've seen how this affects students that do not have the ability to decode words. Okay? They're guessing. They're doing their best guess. They're making, trying to make sense. They're using context clues, and they're doing a really good job, but they're not doing it 100% right, which is important when you're really learning for, when you're reading for comprehension and for meaning. So Maureen, in the lower school, in, well, yes, in the lower elementary, is really working on the foundational skills, the phonemic awareness, the phonemes, the, the decoding. Okay? Now, in the upper school, in grades almost four and 12, the focus has been more on vocabulary and comprehension. So Dr. Twormin came in, and we all nested into the library last spring, and then we did that again in October, and she really treated us as if like we were students, and she was teaching us, and we were really immersed in like a vocab lesson, and as a math teacher, that's me, right? I was kind of like, what are we doing? But I, at the end of it, I was like, holy moly, like, I can take away these strategies, and I can apply them into my math class, which is huge, because you don't think of that when you think of literacy, but it can go across all subjects, which is awesome. And her strategies are low prep. You can, they're interactive, they're engaging, the kids have latched on to it, they're into it, and it's just like this awesome grab bag of like really informed, useful strategies to make everyone more mindful of vocab, vocabulary, and how we can strengthen that and deepen that understanding. So it's been awesome.
Yeah.
It's all about comprehension, understanding, knowledge. Right now, what Maureen has specifically brought, besides like phonics instruction, is she's really brought the specific, like, she's bought screening tools, so I now can look at students, give them screeners and reading and encoding, which is spelling, and say, oh, you're missing C K, or you're missing D, and we can give specific direct instruction right there, and that's incredibly helpful. In addition, she's also then providing progress monitoring tools and help with how to track students, and so this is incredibly helpful for teachers and for my position as the intervention coordinator, so I can track what students need and when, and also use that data to inform what we're teaching on an individual level, but also on a classroom level. And then tomorrow, what she's really, which is fun, is the teachers will be, she will be modeling a solid phonics instruction, Maureen will be, and then she will be also helping teachers design their own and giving feedback in the classroom. So it's a really hands-on, comprehensive approach that's supportive to teachers and helpful, usable and engaging, and the kids have really latched on to it, and they seem receptive, so it's going well. And I think like in the middle school anyway, like, we're excited. We're excited to do it. We're excited to like try something new and really deepen the vocabulary use and comprehension with our kids and push them to like not settle for using the word cool, you know, like, okay, what are some other forms of cool? Like, let's up at a level, mean and nice, like, what are some other ways that we can, you know, say the same thing, but use different words that are higher intensity? So it's just kind of like, you know, up in the bar a little bit, you press the board. So it's, it's been great. And I, I know, I recognize a lot of your names, that last name specific. I'm like, okay, I know you kid. And so what I'm seeing is, I'm working with students, and the light bulbs are starting to go, it's like, they are, like, you see here, unlocking literacy, but it really is, like, you know, when you saw a kid, and they were, they all of a sudden started reading, and you're like, oh, this is happening for you. Like, you're getting it, right? And that's what I'm seeing on my end, my specific instruction with certain small group or one-on-one. Did you guys have any questions?
I'd just like to throw in, I'm using, I went to the same training sheet, I'm using a lot of the strategies of AP kids, I mean, at higher levels, so it is, it's applying really across the board very, very well, very effectively, so.
How does, how does this integrate with sort of our reading program that we kind of have?
That's a great, so we are taking, so right now, it does, so Orin Gillingham is also based in science of reading, that's what, like, so we're using those same skills and also just making sure that we're working off of like a same foundational knowledge, and so we're all having, we're bringing everybody up to the same level, because there is different knowledge bases, especially in the, in the lower, the K through, not especially, what I'm saying is like, we want the same language, the same techniques, the tools within the K through three, so it's consistent.
And that's what the, that's what the specialist is coming in and sort of helping get everybody on to the same page.
Kind of helps them vertically align that.
Yep.
Yeah. Our instructional practices, and so with our foundational skills, and then also with our core curriculum.
And are you, are you the one that's compiling the data or to sort of evaluate the kids on an individual basis?
Yes, I'm on, I'm doing the individual basis. Yes. Yeah. And then we have a system branching mindset we purchased that all the data goes into, and it essentially triangulates and gives us some nice printout of where we are in a particular classroom, a grade, student level, and then with that, we can say, this is, this challenge is to work on this particular tool through the assessments, that assessment that she's doing feeds into the system, so it can give us individual lessons for students too.
Well, that's great, because that is good, but we don't have a strategy to evaluate it, it makes it difficult to.
We have a strategy now.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Long day.
All right, STEM team?
Megan and Peter and I got to go to the Innovation for Transformation Consortium at the Indian Hill School District in Cincinnati, outside of Cincinnati, Ohio, and they had professional videographers present, like capture the whole thing, so we thought we'd just show you a quick two-minute video made by them, and then we can talk more specifically about what we experienced.
I'm a student for Chief Johnson, under campus, like four days of Indian Hill Schools, and today, I'm on the campus of Indian Hill High School, the region's biggest, this place, uniquely in the Indian Hill. The niche best in Ohio, Indian Hill High School has a singular focus, creating an unparalleled student experience. Our commitment to leadership development within our brains to acquire skills that transcend the typical high school experience can be seen through our experience ship program. The experience program is all about the life of students' real-world hands-on experiences that enhance student outcomes.
I'm really sorry, it's not, hold on. We can like skip over, hold on.
I like the energy already.
We are welcoming leaders from across the nation to the AFA Ball Conference here at Indian Hill. We're so excited to have talented leaders from sorts of states and school districts to study innovative practices, STEM learning, ways to transform a school community, being able to showcase what our students and teachers do every day here on the hill. It's one thing to showcase how we're utilizing the AI to make our buildings alive, it's another to have students who actually bring those spaces to life, showcase how they've made magic. We're talking all the entrepreneurship, innovation, having a moment to showcase our campus, the people, the places, the things that make Indian Hill exactly what it is.
Leadership and the STEM is such an important part of Indian School District, and it is important that other leaders can come in and see how it is impacting their students to have such a impact on the young leaders all across the country.
Getting kids to go out in the world that's different than what we enter roomless, and so we understand how to make sure we're giving them every advantage possible to be successful in future.
I think it's important to come together, especially meeting people from various different states and learning on a national level how we can propel education on a lot of the topics that not only Indian Hill is working on, but other school districts are.
You're not wrong. I think that's the beauty of this collaboration, seeing Beijing School, Beijing kids, staff. You can have the most beautiful facilities, which I would argue Indian Hill has some of the most beautiful facilities I've ever seen, but without the students, it is just brick and mortar. That's what it's all about, and that's why we come together, and that's why these visits are paramount to the work we're doing.
I promise I was there, even though I was not. Yeah, I'm fine with that. So yeah, that's kind of so briefly, we got to go to actually four different schools in Indian Hill. They had a primary, they had the middle high school, the high school, and then they had the early.
Like K two.
K two.
Three to five.
Yeah, three to five. Yeah, six to eight, and then nine through 12. And just being able to go through these schools and be able to see that at every level, even the kindergarten through second grade, had, you know, STEM embedded into it. Each one of those schools, as you saw, there's a lady taking a photograph of it, they all have that big, this is a STEM school, and just seeing, going into the classrooms and just seeing the students like engaged even from the kindergarten level with these activities. They had, they were meaningful to the community or things that were going on, such as the kindergarten one, they were talking about, you know, what is a superhero? Because they noticed students were having superhero lunchboxes, backpacks, different clothing, so then they wanted to talk about that. So they're talking about, you know, superheroes that we see on TV, but then who else could be a hero? You know, firefighters, your, your parents, different jobs, things like that. So then the buy-in for that for them is they're learning about something that's meaningful to them, and it's connecting with, you know, all the different standards and things like that. We went to the prime, or the elementary school, and we got to see them working with hydroponics in like a small area where they were building and they were growing all their plants and things, and then they were selling them, and this is just the elementary building, which is selling them, and then they were using the funds that they got to continue to grow and expand on it. So it was just really interesting, and then continuing through each grade level, they had different things that they were doing that were meaningful to them, and just being able to connect with what they're interested in and stuff that helps the community, I think is just a really great thing, and the kids were super excited about it. I know we were excited to see it. You could tell that the kids really enjoyed it. It wasn't just something that, you know, this is what we're doing, it was something that this is what we want to do, and then how can the, the teachers help facilitate that?
I'm going to add to that, just that, you know, the STEM conference, and they made a strong point of saying STEM doesn't just mean this traditional science tech, engineering and math, but it also means strategies that engage the mind. And we did visit like a makers-based fab lab area, and we did visit a really nice TV productive studio in the school, but their message was it's much deeper than that, it's much broader than that. So not just like the traditional STEM stuff we might think of, but project-based learning was a huge key, and like, for instance, that was what Megan also touched on, students like figured out what a problem was. One of the elementary school classes found there were too many bees bothering them at recess, they're getting, they're bothering them, and so they researched how to plant a pollinator garden away from the recess area, and high school kids helped them build the wooden boxes to bring the, you know, the soil. They researched what are good pollinator flowers, they grew these flowers, and then these kids gave us the tour, so I said, well, did it work? Like, are the bees still bothering you? And they're like, no, because the bees grow over there. So like, project-based learning is like, student, students kind of come up with the question, depending on their age level, their experience, of course, they need help, but they come up with a question, they do the research, it's like authentic learning, and it helps the community, whether it be the school community or like the wider community. So project-based learning was a really big hurdle, as was something called building thinking classrooms. Like a lot of teachers that live in, we've had professional development, and it started out as a math gear for math teachers, but I think many classes are using this way of teaching called building thinking classrooms. So, you know, those were two initiatives that weren't like high-techy. And then like we saw really amazing projects made out of also cardboard, like it's not just, and we have this amazing blowtorch that we also have training here, we have some really cool technology at the moment, but it's kind of more than that. So, yeah, it was really eye-opening, and of course, their school was like so nice and new, and we were like, oh my God. But, you know, everything we saw, we felt like, you know, we could bring it here.
And they, and they did emphasize on that, we did mention, you know, that like their high school size was about like a fraction of what our whole entire K through 12 is, but they emphasized that it doesn't necessarily matter the size of the school, these are things, especially if you're a small school, that we could really do these things, and how tight we already are with our community to be able to help them and reach out to them in other ways while our students are still learning is, I think, a really important thing.
Yeah. And they did show, if they use a curriculum provider called Jason, they have like pre-made curriculum, so if a teacher didn't feel comfortable, you could use one of the curriculums to help you do STEM-related things, but they really emphasized, like, so they're like, you don't have to reinvent them, there are many published curriculums out there, curricula out there, but.
And even they can help build ones, if you were interested in something that, you know, maybe wasn't out there for it, that they will actually work with you to help build, you know, a project-based learning activity around it, or STEM-based or something like that, and then, and that's K through 12.
I guess one more thing I'll say is they really focus on career pathways when students leave high school, like what are the top five skills employers are looking for now? And they are communication, customer service, leadership, attention to detail, and collaboration. You know, and I'm well aware, like, I teach grade six now, the careers that my sixth graders might have someday probably might not even exist yet, because things are changing so fast. So this idea of being able to collaborate is probably pretty important for the future, and that's what PDL, project-based learning and STEM things, they encourage that collaboration. Yeah, thanks for supporting us and going out there.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun, and it was, it was really great to have that opportunity to go out there.
Did you guys, it seems like they have a lot going on, but did you see anything that you think like in the short term that we can start to do here?
I think so, like, as Jackie touched on, like, we have some of these things already down in the other building, like the blowtorch, and we got to briefly, they came from Wendy White Mountain Scientists, two up in Littleton, came down and kind of gave us a little bit of an overview, but then I believe next week or two. We have, there's two different sessions where if you're interested to go up and really get more hands-on with it to kind of figure it out, and then something that can be mobile and move, so then not just one, you know, it's not just stuck in one room, because I think some.
We're putting it on a cart. We're going to order a cart, so that the teachers now have been trained on the basics of it, and then people can incorporate that into their classroom.
And just knowing that we have these things now available to us, because if you asked a couple of weeks ago to some of the staff members, maybe in the elementary building, they were like, what, what is that? What is the blowtorch? Or the 3D printers or things like that? So now, seeing that the lower grades can use these things, and that it can be incorporated in a meaningful way, not just, here we go, we're just going to use it because we have it, but we're using it for a reason, and it's connecting, and they're learning, and they're seeing things come alive like right in front of their eyes. Their creation, what they want, can be built for them. So it's, I think it's really important now that we have some more training into that, that we can really incorporate these things into our classrooms.
Yeah, and I think of, of how I might use it, like, I've been to professional development on building thinking classrooms, but it's like you go to these one-day things, you like think it's really great, then you get back to the classroom and hopefully you remember it, you know, and so I got to kind of see it in action, and it just re-inspired me like, oh yeah, I forgot that I could try this. And the project-based learning, it was a three-year plan that they had. They let teachers, they had teachers observing other teachers for a whole entire year before asking any teachers for whom it was, for who, whom it was new to, like, they didn't ask teachers to try it, they didn't just mandate, okay, we're going to do project-based learning, they let teachers observe other teachers for a whole year, so they could feel comfortable and really get training to do it, because it is, it's a pretty big endeavor, when you already have a bunch of standards that you have to teach, you have state testing, you have to prepare kids for, to take on project-based learning is, is quite a big chunk to bite off, so I do definitely want to implement it. It takes some thought for that, but certainly like the technology pieces, you know, right now.
Yeah, yeah, it seems like it's a challenge on some level to integrate the project-based learning with components of the curriculum that you sort of need to teach, and that certainly, again, it takes some thought to, to make that work, but it does seem like a worthwhile endeavor.
Yeah, I don't know how, you know, if we could do it slowly, maybe like, I, like, one, maybe Mrs. Morris and I, she's a volunteer, maybe she and I could like try one project-based learning thing a year together, and, and because she and I teach math, science, ELA socially, we could incorporate, you know, all the facets of that for one unit. I don't think it's something you can do all.
And they do have ones, you know, they're small, they can be from a three-week project to something that you do all year long. It all depends on what grade level, what the interest is, what activity it is, and then how long you do want to explore it or work on that for. So they have, like I said, they have a small one, which maybe would, it might be something to start off with, just kind of get our feet wet, and then if we see that it's starting to go along, because it does have the curriculum, it has Rubik's and all that stuff, so we can see that isn't connecting in with maybe our science standards or ELA, because you can tie them all in, because I think a lot of teachers may have that fear of, oh, it's, you know, project-based learning, how are we going to do all these other things that we need to throughout the day? But it does tie into all those other areas of your language arts, your writing pieces, all those different things, social studies, science, math, and it can all be integrated in there, and it's not a whole day, like, this is not taking up your whole entire day. This is, you know, a part of your day that you're working on these things, such as your science, social studies, and then adding it into your language arts or math classes as well.
It seems to increase student engagement, which from my point of view is the biggest hurdle, is getting students engaged.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda this evening is communications. I did receive some communication forwarded to Dr. Steady, and I, and she may talk about it in the, so this meeting this evening, but we received a correspondence from the, not the Electric Co-op, is it the Electric Co-op? Yeah. They have some funding, some grant money and some programs that they are looking to help some schools use that involve efficiency upgrades to the buildings. I know that we've done a lot of those in terms of like the lighting is all LED, I think at least in this building, and then maybe in the, yeah, both those, and I know that was that a while ago, but they, there's opportunities apparently to utilize some funding, some grant money, and some, I think they do it where they pay for, they'll pay for like half a project or something like that, for efficiency upgrades, and I think it's worthwhile to at least maybe have somebody come up, take a look at what we can do, if there's some projects that we can, you know, be letting that funding for, and then we have a docket windows in this building, which I think could be potentially a good spot to use some of that, and then, you know, we just redid our HVAC systems in both buildings, so I think we're probably right now doing pretty well there, but there does seem to be some money out there, and it's, it's worthwhile to see if there's anything that we can do to utilize some of that. So that was the only correspondence that I received.
I, we only received the NCS newsletter, which is in your packet.
All right, then Deb, is this a mixture of course?
Yeah, a few things. Okay, so at the last meeting, I put, and I think you packed it this week, to the 23, 24 financial reports, and the reports I usually report to on an annual basis, but I can give you some highlights if you want. So in, again, in the packets, it's a memo, there's a general fund review of expenditures, and basically, you know, we had some unfiltered, half-filled positions, so we saw savings and salaries and benefits last year. We had already talked about that. We had some things with oil costs versus budget, a lot of other pluses and minuses, as you can see, I tried to highlight the mid-line items. The HVAC project was not finished, and we encumbered that at the end, end of the year. So in, in the end, and we also had, so when you're calculating your unassigned fund balance, we rolled back in the unassigned fund balance from the prior year, so you take all these pieces, expenditures, your revenues, and in the end, we had a general fund unassigned balance of 833,000. We retained 399,000 of that, the 5% retainers that we can do, and we returned about 433,000 to the towns, which then is applied to the New Year's tax rate and the tax rate setting process, which they just went through in the fall. And again, we, we knew we had some of those savings and salaries and benefits, as we had some unfilled positions, but that, and also in the packet, so I do a general fund.
Can I, can I ask a quick question on that first document? Before we move on? The 166 prior year unused, that's, that's the retained fund balance minus the flooring?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, because otherwise it was 340,000.
Yeah, okay.
But we used some of that, so then that gets rolled back in. I do another. I do another, I look at the food service fund now, which, so that's a long sheet. And what we've seen here is our subsidy from the general fund keeps increasing. You know, our food service is not a break-even operation or making money operation. It's really not set up that way. Our food, the food costs keep going up. Meal prices are adjusted no more than 10 cents a year because that's kind of the federal guidelines. And we really can't price them too higher, no one's gonna be eating lunch. Our volume and enrollments are down, you know, so you take all of these, our free and reduced numbers are down this year. So you take all these factors and it contributes to that negative balance increasing over the last few years. The year that we, the COVID years, when everyone ate for free, that was great for our food service operation. Just hoping, you know, we can push some of our New Hampshire legislatures and say, we need free lunches in New Hampshire again. Other states around us do, so. Anyway, we budget for that subsidy amount every year in our budget. We budget 30,000, it was actually what, 60-something thousand? So, but that's just the way the food service operations is. We are looking at some of our free and reduced numbers right now because our numbers are actually lower than they were last year. We're just trying to figure out why. The negative, you know, we don't, again, it's just a lot of pieces going into that, so we're, we're working on that.
What's the SSL?
That was the years of COVID. It's seamless summer operations. We operated under different rules.
Yeah, that was when we were, everyone was free.
Yeah, everyone's free, yeah. So you look in those years, that's our, our actual daily food sales were down, but our federal reimbursements were high. Because everyone ate for free, we were able to get reimbursed through the government on that, so. And those years when you, we had only a $6,000 negative balance showed, you know, what happens when everyone eats for free. It increased our volume, increased our reimbursements. But food services, food service. The other pieces in the packet, I gave you some trust fund reports. We did look at, we did discuss some facilities projects tonight and our facilities trust fund right now has about $148,000 in there. There's other trust funds that we have, that would, might be able to help us in some of our projects we discussed tonight. So I just have the trust funds, because those are other funds that we have, other money we have. And then there's this district, school district profile reports that are at the end. And there's comparison of last year to the prior year. And they come out of the state reports that are generated when I'm doing the year-end reports. For me, it serves as a check and balance to make sure everything is okay. And also we can see some trends. So it shows the percentage of the major function lines, like regular education to the total budget or special education to the total budget. And sometimes you see some trends of the changes, you know, regular ed might go down, special ed might go up. But all, all in all, it's, it's pretty consistent over the years. So to me, that's, that's good, you know? Things are getting classified where they should. And I think that's on last year's reports. If you do have any specific questions and anything, if any, yes, it is.
We don't have anything currently projected to come out of these. I know there were some items that we had, we had removed from the budget. And then we, we said, will we use?
We did some technology. We did the lockers. There might have been a couple of things. Yeah, there might have been a couple of other things, but I think we've hit most of the major ones. Again, when they get to facilities, we did discuss windows and that could be an area where, like if we had to do a match for those projects, it could come out of.
The special education capital reserve?
That's in pretty good shape.
We had a target number though, that we were trying to.
I think we were trying to get to like two, two, like two placements. We had two placements.
Yeah, I'm, so last year, 276 essentially was where, basically where we were at. Between two and three, you know, before and after our, that 60,000 was putting the Fed money back in there, right?
Right, yeah, the category.
Is that, is that where, are we looking to be around two? Are we looking to be around, because we're 336, we're up quite a bit. You know, where, what's our target? I think it was, I thought it was lower than.
I would think it would be. You're talking about residential and paying for transportation, that's probably about 250,000 a year.
Per, per placement, yeah, that, I mean, so.
But a day placement would be about, with transportation, probably about 130 to 150 a year.
170. Two at 170.
That would be two day placements.
So that, so if we're, if we're 336, six, that's pretty close to two placements. One, yeah. Okay, so I, I guess my question is, when, when we're looking at the budget this year and we're looking at, you know, unassigned fund balance, putting it into, putting where, where it needs to go. We've probably got another 60,000 from the federal, right?
Yes.
And that puts us at close to four, that's almost. So that puts us in a pretty good spot without allocating any additional.
Yeah.
Okay. And then from, unless, unless we use it for something, then.
Yeah, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about that in a second.
Oh, sorry to jump in, my bad.
In, in your packet, one of us. In your packet also, I put in a current year snapshot of where we are. Anyway, so basically, yeah, it's just a one-page summary in your packet. Yeah, that.
The profile?
It's, then the report of expenditures and finances, yeah. Anyway, basically our, our spending is pretty much in line with our budget right now, but there are some lines that are up and some that are down. The big, the biggest areas of change, again, that's by function. But when we look at staffing, which represents about 75% of our budget, we currently have some savings in our salaries and benefits based on current year hiring versus budget. As you recall, at the end of the year, we had some teachers that had left in some of those positions we didn't fill. Or we use a piece of this position, a piece of that to put together other positions. So we kind of shifted some things around, you know, we had a high school social studies teacher that we didn't fill. But we shifted some of that to the elementary to make sure we had two teachers per grade level in the elementary. We have currently a PE health position unsealed, but we're paying, we have student interns that we are paying for that at a lesser rate. So we'll have some savings there overall. But we do have some additional expenses, like we have some special ed placement costs that we didn't budget for. And I'm gonna get into that in a, in a little bit. So again, we are pretty much, we're pretty good as far as the budget goes. There's probably gonna be some shifts in some line items. I can talk about, okay, so as we're, as we're putting together the budget for next year, we're looking at some of these things. Like some of those placement costs, some of the, some of the staffing, we'll look at the, where's our staffing needs for next year? As we're putting things together, you know, one of the areas that we're looking at is the STEM and how we want to look at that. We had the, one of the positions, Chris Goodwood's position that we were kind of looking at because that was probably all gonna get wrapped into the STEM and how are we gonna set that up? And Mary has written a lot of grants for the staff to go out and check out some of these programs. So that's where all, they're going and checking these out, using some of it for the literacy. So a lot of the things that they talked about last night is being funded through grants as we're exploring different options. But as, again, as we look at next year's budget, there's, again, some things that are gonna affect next year's budget. So like when we talk about placements that you normally know, like our out-of-district placements, you guys know that those are sometimes in our budget. Additionally, what we've seen this year that has an impact on our budget is when, so an out-of-district placement, the school district would place the students in a different placement because whatever placement, they just can't, we just can't meet their needs here. But now we're seeing that parents are placing their students in other schools, they call the charter schools. So a parent can place their child in another school, whether it's a charter school or another public school. If a student has special needs, it is up to the district that they reside in to pay for those special needs. So we might have a parent that places a student at say, in a charter school that's outside of our district. But they might need some special services. They might need a para. It is this, the sending, the, the district that they reside in, because we're not the sending district, because the parent is sending, the district that they reside in that has to pay for those special ed costs. So we've seen a few of those this year in our budget and then, you know, we don't, that's just the law. That's how that's done to different places.
Paying for those costs if they were here, so.
We would pay for those costs if they were here. That's unacceptable. They'd be naturally absorbed. But I think the difficulty is that they would be naturally absorbed into our budget. So we'd be paying the extra pair, however, if they needed speech, if they needed any like reading, writing or math special ed. We already have a teacher, so you're paying for those above and beyond what you'd typically be paying. But the charter school law requires that and this school district, I don't think has ever seen that happen. The first year, so those type of things. Or if a parent decides that they want to tuition their child into another public school, we don't get the say yes or no, but we have to pay for whatever that special cost is at another public school. Yeah, so the parent might be paying tuition to that other school, but if that student needs special services, we have to pay for those. Just the way the laws. Anyway, so we've seen a few of those. We're gonna factor those into the budget and, you know, maybe we use our trust fund to pay for those. Or we put them in our budget as we know that they exist today. They're not as high as an out-of-district. Probably less than 30,000, but it's still, it would be absorbed into our current budget. Yeah, they were here, yeah, but we actually have to cut a check. Yeah, for those, so. Anyway, so those are some of the things that we're seeing. The other thing, health insurance premiums, we, we got our increases for next year, nine and a half percent. I was trying to have, it's under 10. I mean, there, I've seen rates 15, 20% increases, same last year. Yes, it is a big, because that's a big piece of our budget. So that's big. New Hampshire retirement employer cost is going down slightly. It does offset the health insurance increase. Does beat an increase, but New Hampshire retirement is funded by the employees. They pay 7, 7.5% of their pay each, payroll goes in, goes to New Hampshire retirement and the employers. So the current year rates for the employers, there's actually two rates. We have a teachers group rate for our, it's 19.64% of salaries. And all other school employees group rate is 13.53%. So that's what the school district has to pay to New Hampshire retirement, into the New Hampshire retirement fund. The state used to pick up a piece of that and they don't anymore. And that's why we've seen increases in the employer rates. This is the first year I've seen a slight decrease. So anyway, those are other things that will, as we're putting the budget together. The admin has gone through the budget packets the teachers have submitted. And again, putting all that together. And your first budget meeting will be in December, first Wednesday after Thanksgiving. So I think that's what I have. So the only other thing is Mary and I wanted to do some presentation on education funding and advocacy in December. We just went to a meeting a couple of weeks ago with the New Hampshire Superintendent's Association and Mary's like, got up to speed a little bit.
Is that still all good up in the air at this point or is there?
Yeah, still, yeah, the biggest. Well, they're still, the formulas are the formulas that they are. Yeah.
Any questions for Deb? Thank you, Deb. All right, Superintendent.
A lot of papers here. Okay, here we go. So I, I was able to meet with Kevin to talk about Final Site, which is the website. And so he's agreed to attend a couple of meetings with us on Final Site to just share his knowledge base. And they went through that with the move on the website, so. He had to give us some insights, recommendations on that. So we're pretty excited to get that ball moving. In the last, since we met last couple of weeks ago, I applied for three grants. One is for a literacy grant, it's 25,000 annually and it's for K-5 literacy and letters training. It's to support the work that we're currently doing. So that would be a two-year project for us to be able to apply. All the teachers had to agree to attend all the same training, so we'd be all in the same systems, which is something that they recognized when I spoke to you last year about the literacy work, when we did the review, that there, there needs to be more consistency and there needs to be more professional development. So that's why we've endeavored on that literacy training. So that was submitted today and we will hear back in a couple of weeks on that. The other one was a hydroponic tower. It was the timing of that, of them coming back from Cincinnati and Megan saying, I want a hydroponic tower. And all of a sudden there was a grant, the next day opportunity in my mailbox. And so we applied for that to get that project going. And then there was a mini-grant from the organization who sponsored the, well, they didn't sponsor. They had the opportunity, we paid through grant money to go to the Cincinnati for a $3,500 mini-grant for STEM. So we applied to get a, for elementary school, a 3D printer, one that would be safe for elementary kids to use. The 3D designed pens that aren't, that are safe for K to three. Family engagement activity where we could do some STEM activities with families and for continued professional development for our staff. I'm gonna jump down to the professional development because that will follow up with some of our STEM activities. Coming back from the professional development training in Cincinnati, we, we have the STEM advisory team get together and for them to share and say, what can we do today? I think that's somebody here to ask that question. And we shared that we had the glow forge, so we decided that we wanted staff to be trained on the glow forge. So we had White Mountain Science come down and do that and offer continued training two times this month. In addition to that, we're gonna, we just wrote for one of our grant items to have Wimsey participate with our staff to really plan out what this could look like in the schools with us and to be able to help assist with project-based learning. So it's not such a heavy lift for our teachers of those who want to do it. So that came off of those conversations. So I have a conversation with Wimsey tomorrow about that work. And I think that's it around those type items. Well, I'll, I'll go into the literacy work that we're doing. So you've heard that Maureen Watson will be here tomorrow, two days, and Dr. Tolman. But in between that, we've been observing in classrooms to be able to see this in action. Some of their vocabulary lessons and the kids are really excited, gathering around the teacher's desk and playing all kinds of cool vocabulary games. So it's great to see the teachers immediately putting that, those strategies into place. Lastly, I reached out to a couple of organizations around strategic planning. I'd let you know that I'd asked them to send me a two-page info on, you know, their organization, what a strategic plan process could look like and then some work samples. And I would recommend going with one organization over the, over the other, mainly because of the conversations I have and what I've received back from the organization. So I felt two rev did respond to my request in the manner in which I had asked for that to be sent to me. So I, that would be something, I don't know if you want two rev to come and do a presentation, what you guys want, more information from them. You'll see the timeline for the two revs. I'd asked for that probably the end of the summer, beginning of the school year. But their timeline's slightly off, but I had spoken to them and they can adjust that to start January, February this coming year. And Debbie and I had spoken about how we could fund some of that this year. And she felt confident that with our current budgets and some of the savings that, that we have, that we could shift some of the money. confident that with our current budgets and some of the savings that um, that we have, that we could shift some of the money towards this. If I have anything else on here other than uh, the winter coaches, um, let's see. There's the triple.
I have a question.
Sure.
Heard about the glow forge three times today.
Yeah.
Like Jay has got the best one ever, but it's not a glow forge, it's even better.
It's, the glow forge is like a CNC laser. So it can cut, it can catch, it can do all kinds of stuff depending on the size. Yeah, but it's a really um, cool tool where, that you can use to make a ton of different things, a couple of materials. Some number of different instructional projects, different types of projects. It's just a, it's a neat piece of technology. I think there's opportunities for sort of uh, the project-based learning. With that, that are, that are exciting. I think that the kids are going to be really engaged with it because it's just such a neat piece of technology that, you know.
You could make puzzles, you could cut into uh, metal, you can cut into leather, it can burn uh, image. So you could, um, you're just going to, a child to make a baby plate. They could program what they want. It could actually, it takes a picture, a kid drew something and it could burn it into the wood or cut it into the wood. Uh, but you're putting it into a computer system, uploading it, and then you put the material you want in it and it does it automatically. And it's, it's a very fun process to even watch. It has a glass top, so, and we have it bented, so it can be mobile. Um, and so kids can just stand around it and watch it all happen.
It's a big.
No, it's like, probably if I were to, I don't know, what's this, four, three feet by?
Yeah, something like that, yeah, probably like this.
Yeah, three feet by four.
Mostly these two sides of this table.
Yeah, it's not quite that, yeah, yeah.
And most of the stuff that you're doing, you're cutting sort of thinner materials for each, yeah, but it can cut all kinds of different things.
Plastics.
Yeah.
Very cool.
It's a nice intro to CNC machining for kids without all the CAD stuff that just to force the whole of me.
Yeah, I think one of the benefits of that piece of technology is that it's designed for a casual user. So an easy interface for people to like, you know, get started with a project. There's easy ways for them to be like, this is what I want and then be able to actually turn it into a product.
You could do simple keychains, uh, fundraising activity, could make little little keychains and sell them, you know, it's, it, so it's fun.
Great idea.
Yeah.
Thank you. And that in combination with some of our three D printing capabilities that we have, we have a couple of others. There's some, there's opportunities for the students.
And we're looking just, you're aware, to move some, because the three of the three D printers fit in one room. And so we're looking to possibly take one of them and put them up at the elementary school if we don't get this grant. Um, so that way, the staff aren't having to move the kids so much, but it's when they get all their jackets on and things. And, and it's safe to put in um, the library.
So it's a, I guess a great point about the student being able to use it for fundraising because I.
Uh, maybe I shouldn't have said that.
Yeah, well, definitely. I was coerced into buying a, you know, a little.
You put my twenty dollars in here for Jasmine.
You got, you got a cup for a hat today?
Yes, it is.
I got cut up for a mug.
Strategic planning there.
That must have not be a nice.
They're what?
It gets printed on red if you want, it could, it could.
Can put a class, I'll just say, you know, we're going to make nameplates for, or sell nameplates for ten bucks. Can, are they able to use the schools?
I, I think that we just have to look at our fundraising things. Um, I think that it sounds like a great idea.
And the reason I think about it is because, you know, the mug, right, you're, you're paying whatever, ten dollars a mug until the class is only getting, you know, sixty dollars. But if you're making nameplate, plates, you're getting the wood from whatever, you're making all the money, right? That's, nameplate's just the example, but like, using, using these tools and like, can it be a learning process not only creating the thing, but also, you know, marketing it and selling it. You're seeing it from step.
Yeah.
And I mean, I think that's sort of where, where I see it as a, of the project-based learning, it has a, a ton of opportunities, right? You can have the kids to write something about what they want to do. They can then design what they want to do. There's sort of an entrepreneurial component of that and, you know, coming up with a plan and then the execution component of it. Just there's, there's a lot of availability of cool things to do to get the kids engaged and thinking about things in a different way. I think also that with the glow forge, there's not a lot of consumables with it, right? So like, aside from what you're cutting and what you're using, it's not like the three D printers where you have to buy the film that it's actually. So, you know, if a class wanted to use it, it's not like, there's not a lot of cost for them to do.
And we, there was, there's a kid building a robot and he tried to use the three D printer to cut out a gear and it just wasn't working right, because he was able to cut it on the glow forge. So now his robot is able to do the one thing we didn't have the P store. So, great.
Yeah. It's nice to have that, the, you know, the technology, the manufacturing, that's the way that those types of things are going. So getting the kids exposed to that and.
The kindergarten teacher, this parent was very excited, should all these ideas of how these kids could design all. It was pretty exciting to see K to twelve in a room together and then, then they all share how they would possibly use it. And it was pretty cool to see that the other day.
That's exciting. Did you have anything else that you?
I don't think so. I just.
Did you want action on that strategic plan?
Well, I, I think maybe if you guys are ready to, or if you want more information, I'm not sure where you want to go from me and her.
So, so I would just say, the last time we did a strategic plan, I think most, no.
I was on it.
You were there, you were on board at the time, I think, too. Um, I don't know if you two were. We, we, we had an agency that came in and facilitated sort of a plan and all that. It was a lengthy, I think.
Was it demonstrated success? No?
No, it was the Brian Group, I think.
School board, school board, yeah, yeah.
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 It, they, they came in and was kind of, kind of got dragged out a bit, I think, because of COVID, is that?
Yeah, exactly. We started before COVID and then COVID hit and then we got back together, so it's.
It, it took longer than it should have, but that, I don't think it was anybody's fault there, but the idea is, you know, this is, what we're looking for is somebody to sort of facilitate the process. That would be the, the reaching out to the community members to, to identify priorities, putting together the um, team that's going to develop the plan and then sort of facilitating all parts of the plan. And so there's the two kind of proposals here, demonstrate success and two revolutions. I guess the question would be, does, does anyone want to, do we want to hear from these folks to, you know, if they would be willing to send a representative to just talk to us about, you know, the process and answer any questions? Is it, is that something that you think you'd find worthwhile?
Um, it sounds like you got a good sense of one over the other. Um, I'm not saying that wouldn't be worthwhile, and this might be just a distracting question, but is it strange that on their company background portion, um, demonstrated success? They say, we have a strong client base and a solid balance sheet with no financial debt. Is it strange that they talk about their business's finances? Is that like a?
I, I've never heard someone.
I, I mean, it could just be, you know, reassuring you that they're, that they have the wherewithal and the staffing and everything to finish a project and not.
It's.
Not walk away from the project midway because they don't have, you know.
It's just an interesting. Anyway.
Yeah, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but two revs seems to be the winner by default.
Right.
I don't know if it's by default. I, I reached out to them first because I'm familiar, you'll see my name in one of the strategic plans, I'm familiar with their work. Uh, but I, I wasn't sure how much this would cost, so I wanted to reach out to another group and so I reached out to demonstrated success. Um, and the product that I received wasn't what I had asked for. So I wasn't sure, like, you know, does it make more sense to go with somebody? Is it going to be that much less money? And, and it's not. They came in pretty close.
So if we don't want them to come in and do a presentation, whatever, what's the next step, Jim?
So I guess if, if everybody's comfortable um, without, if folks are comfortable without having them come in and sort of explain, you know, the process and um, then we can take a vote on, move forward with one or the other. It sounds to me like the recommendation is two revs, so I think probably that would be my, my, my thought would be, you know, move forward with that as a recommendation. We could do that tonight, uh, but you know, it, it's not a small amount of money, right? So it's a, it's a two-year process almost, or a year-long process.
Year and a half to two years.
Yeah, and, and so it's, so it's not, and it's, I think, fifty-four, fifty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, so is that something we can put in the budget and then?
I had to do over those, that time period so we could fund part of it this year and then the other part in the budget for next year.
So, so I think what, what Dr. Sayad said was that based on what we have available, Deb thinks that we can fund the half that we need to upfront to get the ball, the ball rolling and then we can put the next part of it in the budget. My recollection, and maybe W have a better sense of this than I do, is the last time we did it, it cost us about thirty-five thousand. Yeah, so it's a, it's an increase. It's not a, it's not a huge increase in considering it was six years ago, five years ago when we started that process. Um, you know, it's not.
Could be a better product, too.
Yeah, I, I mean, there's, they do seem to have a pretty comprehensive plan and, and I, you know, the product that they, at least the samples that they've provided for us look good. So I, I guess it's just up to everybody here about, you know, do we want more information? Would we like to hear from them before making a decision? Okay.
I'm good.
All right, then I guess we'll, uh, I'd take a motion to, um, I guess engage two revolutions for the purposes of working with the district to um, redo our strategic plan. So, thank you, Joe.
Second.
Thank you, Jasmine. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Close, extensions, and that motion carries. So the timeline.
I'm going to call them tomorrow.
Yeah.
And uh, see when we can, they were aware that I wanted to push it off till January because I wanted to give this the time to process and to put it in the budget for next year and to figure out where we were, uh, where, where we are with some savings in the district. So they thought they could start in January, February.
And that would be, um.
Everything you see will just get shifted. And with them understanding that we have to have this done by the end of June of next year. Um, because we also want this in line with the NEAS report.
Okay, so are we compressing that timeline tomorrow?
Yeah, well, I, I, I think that they, they felt they could do it, so this is kind of a lot what they, this is what they do for everything, pretty much.
Okay. Is there a reason why we, beyond the financial compliance, is there a reason why we're waiting until January?
No, I just, I, I didn't know how long it would take to get through this process. So I wanted to give you guys the
Yeah.
space that you needed to make a decision, but we could start it. I don't see why they wouldn't be able to start it sooner.
I mean, because their, their sort of projected timeline is to have it be done by the fall, October, November of twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
We're going to be asking them to do it by June of twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Which is quite a bit earlier, five months earlier.
Twenty twenty-six.
Oh, fall.
Yeah, yeah, twenty-six.
Oh, so we have plenty.
We have plenty of time, yeah.
I think you said twenty twenty-five?
Did I? I may have said twenty twenty-five.
Either way.
It's twenty twenty-four, thinking in a year, but it's twenty twenty-six, sorry about that.
No problem.
Yeah.
That's no problem.
Yeah, okay.
No rush. I was just thinking. Well, that's what I was.
By twenty twenty-six.
Excellent.
Yeah.
All right. And then, uh, did you have anything else?
I don't.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and Mrs. Savala, principles of.
Yeah, just uh, touching up on our fall sports, ended on a very high note for everyone. Cross-country competed in the state meet. Uh, we did very well. Our runners turned in great times and some had some personal bests. Um, so it was a very successful uh, cross-country season. Frozen Boy Soccer, another great season. The Varsity Girls and Varsity Boys. Um, as you've seen, boys made it through the first round and um, the girls made it through to the second round. Um, so they all had a great, great season and great playoff runs. Um, and now we're moving on to winter sports. Yep. I think ski, skiing had their first meeting tonight, general meeting for all skier. So that's, I'm sure everyone's getting excited. They want to see some white across the street, I think. Um, so, um, creates K through three and partnership with our own Lincoln Library, um, hosted a, an author. Um, and the author's name is Jim Pedapa. And he also writes, illustrates and creates music for his books, which he shared with K through three last week. And he um, donated two copies of his books. We had, I know these are going to be, I know you're going to want to sign these out. One is called The Cows Go Move. And the other one is The Cows Go Move Shuffle. So um, it'd be very big hits here at, at that link, at our own in Wood Elementary School. Um, no, the kids had a great time. He was very energetic and um, you know, obviously the kid's got to kick out of his uh, you know, his antics, I would say. Anyway, we had PSAT. Um, Matt did a great job setting that up and the testing schedule, I believe the scores are, are in or will begin very soon. So we will um, get you those. We'll feedback on scores. Uh, middle school had their first dance, which was very successful. It's always very high in attendance. Seem to be more excited than the high school with the dances. Friday, we had our Veterans Day assembly. Uh, big thanks to Paula Hood. She's been really the, the core person around that year after year. Um, she puts it together, she finds the, all our people and, and speakers. And on a sad note for Paula, the, our flag bearers have been around since, I think, middle or elementary school in scouts or cub scouts and have, um, you know, right?
Graduated.
I know, they've walked those flags for many years and the three of them are all seniors this year. So she had a nice special presentation for them and uh, it was very nice to see their service. So now we got to lean on, on the new generation coming through. Uh, quarter one closed. Report cards were issued um, on last Friday. Parent-teacher conferences were today and they seemed to go well. I had an, uh, an opportunity to go to both buildings and talk to some parents and um, just see the, the energy level was high, which was nice to see. But that was another successful parent-teacher conference week. Next week is American Education Week and we got a lot planned. All right, here we go. Here's our lineup for next week. Um, the school board will provide dinner, dancing and helps. Um, all next week, um, we are asking students and staff to bring in canned goods because the, our student council is putting on a food drive. And this year we reached out to Kim Pickering um, to um, send a letter out to businesses for us, to the local businesses to see if they wanted to be involved in our food drive. So the food drive is, will begin on Monday and end on Friday of next week. And with, on Friday, we'll have student council members outside the tables to collect food. If any parent wants to drop it off or any of the businesses. And then on that following Monday, excuse me, they will walk the food over to the food bank, the community center. So that's their plan for that. So that sounds, and we haven't really involved the community, like community so much like the businesses. So we're, we're hoping that it's going to be a good, a good turnout from them. So Monday, we celebrate students. Do we do that every day? Yes, we do. Yes. Tuesday is our Linwood celebrates the staff. And we also on Tuesday have a seven-thirty to eight-thirty middle high school band and chorus concert and admission. We ask people to bring in canned or non-terrible goods. Wednesday, Wednesday is celebrate the community day, but we are actually doing that all week with our, with our food drive. And Thursday will provide an afternoon snack.
That was the day that I think you guys traditionally drop off snacks.
No, no, just snacks. Just, yeah.
Thursday, yeah, afternoon snack. So yeah. Delicious snacks made by the school board. And will be available in the elementary and middle high school.
What's snacks about?
And then Friday is our annual parent guardian, grandparents eat lunch with your children.
This Friday is?
Friday, November twenty-second. All that, it's beginning the eighteenth through the twenty-second.
It's, I have, I can make copies of the flyer.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually reading the flyer just so I didn't get anything.
Yeah, I didn't make it in the packet, but I have one here. And I can make copies. I can email it.
Oh, okay.
One hanging out.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Danny, who was our student teacher interim last year for our PE help, she is now with Yalta. And so we, Yalta is, is running strong this year, which is very nice. She comes in on Wednesdays and meets middle school during their lunch and then high school during their lunch. She also is going to start Wild. And she made a presentation a couple weeks ago and I think we have about three or four students that she picked up this afternoon at two-thirty and they do some outdoor adventures. So that's a good thing. Cause we haven't had Wild for a little bit of time here. But now it came back.
That seems like an acronym. Do you know what the?
Yeah, I wish I did. I'd love to help you out on that.
You, five O's in there.
Leadership Development. And what's the W? That was quite a team up. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. And then early act, once again, that's a great thing for elementary grades three through five. And that's a nice precursor into interact when they get to, into the middle high school. And that seems to be going very well. And then we have our own this year. So during advisory period, especially in the middle high school and then just throughout the elementary school, we have our kindness pledge this year. Matt Manning, Aaron Bell and Sydney Campbell have, you know, developed this and developed lessons and which is integrated through the elementary school and then during period five in the mid, in the high school and then in the advisory period of the middle school. Matt, Aaron and Sydney will do these, you know, lessons on acts of kindness and, and, you know, just toward your fellow person and community and how do we become better citizens and, you know, in our, in our communities today. And below, I, I actually pasted in the kindness pledge that was put out to all faculty and staff and students. That was developed with Matt, Aaron and Sydney. And basically we need all students and teachers to sign that because we want to be a certified, you know, kindness school. And our own alley probie developed a nice little artwork that where people will sign. And then once everything is done, we will get our certificate, which we posted in all buildings. We are certified kindness.
There's many activities to be.
Oh, yeah, right, right. But these are just some of them and we could, yeah. Yeah, you just don't have to sign a paper and say thank you.
It was that simple.
Yeah, it was. It's very simple. I mean, thank you very much. Yeah, I think that's, oh yeah, you, did you mention the book fair is going on? Okay, yeah, just, there's things like that. Book fair is going on this weekend. I don't know, has she got, who's been, anybody have you been to the book fair?
My daughter has.
My kids reminded me two thousand times at the book.
I just know when you go in there, I don't know about you, but when I go in there, I'm like, yeah, this is great. I remember that as a kid, the book fair.
It's the exact same book fair as a.
Yes, I know. And that's why I remind you of all the little knickknacks you can get. Yes, thank you very much.
I wanted to say on behalf of the veterans, I wanted to say thank you to the school. The veterans love that event and it's very emotional for some of them. And as you notice from year to year, we're losing a lot of our town veterans. So it gets a little more emotional every year for people, but the veterans really do love it. We have, it, it's a good time for all of us. And it's definitely appreciated. And I want to pass along, I had a chance to chaperone the glow in the dark dance.
Oh, did you?
The kids were so good. Please pass along to them how respectful they were and how good they were. It was kind of a fun event.
You know, I just want to let you know, Joe, that last year semi-formal, you were supposed to come. There was a certain young lady that you're married to, promised me you'd show up and hang out with me and you never made it.
Yeah, I usually do.
Yeah.
Broken prom promise. All right, we have up next committee reports. We, we did have some like wellness committee minutes and facilities met today.
Yeah, we met today. Just a couple things. Do you want me to go first?
That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Touching on your co-op letter there. We're going to try to implement that into with our, hopefully we can get some energy savings on the window project. They have a hundred thousand dollar matching grant or whatever from the co-op. We're going to try to tie that into with the windows. And they also have an LED bulb replacement. It's got, I guess MX or it's a flat goal football will match us half, however it worked out. So we're going to try to use all of that money from the co-op through that letter that you got. Most of the stuff, we really can't really comment. We've been talking about the replacement of the garage and that stuff, but we don't have any prices on that. The flooring, we haven't, don't have any prices on that yet. Some fence replacement, we don't have the places there. HVAC, we do have one issue up here in the new system in one of the classrooms here, just a small classroom across the hall. I can't seem to get the heat going. They're working on that. It's been ongoing for a while now. So hopefully they'll get on it. The average temperature has been about forty-five degrees in the classroom.
That's not enough degrees.
Yeah, that's cool.
It's not. So I mean, with the amount of money that we've spent on this.
It's more of an office and a classroom. They can, it is used, it is used as a classroom with kids, but it shouldn't be if it's forty-something degrees.
I, but it is and that's where, and I just, we're working on it. We, we addressed it at the facilities today, but I'd just like to put it out there. So maybe he works a little bit harder on it. It's been going on for a while. Well, I'll just note on the bets that I've made. I think that's it for really that, because there's nothing really that we have to vote on for facilities or anything. And we're just trying to get a budget together to, for the season, basically. That's it. That's all we talked about tonight.
All right. Thanks, Joe. We have a number of policies for first reading. They're all in the packet. It looks like, so some of these are amended policies and we, we have like, you know, the typical red strikeout where there are changes, but then some of them are just wholesale, like the first few. And I'm wondering, is this the, are these the ones that we implemented earlier this year and then we, we said we'll put them on for review?
Yeah.
So these are, those are the new mandated, legislatively mandated policies that we're, because I know it says.
Back through the policy, the proper channels.
Okay. So, you know, looking through some of these. But there's not a lot of things that we can do on, on this stuff. This is all like, one of my, one of my concerns and sort of a, probably could be classified as just a pet peeve of mine is making sure that all of the, like the, the references are correct. Because I know that when I was in the policy committee, oftentimes we'd come across a reference to a policy that we no longer had or a reference to a policy that had been changed. And there's just in, in the nondiscrimination. There's so AC, ACA, ACC. There's a lot of other policy references. And I just, we look to make sure that those are all consistent with our, okay, great. Okay.
Yeah. I was like, oh no, we missed one.
No, no, I didn't have any specific. I was just looking at like, I didn't have time to, that, that seems like a project. So I didn't have time to do that.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon. I, I should have known. The other, the only other thing that I noticed was there's, I think it's impulse, it's AC. There's, there's like a duty to report and I don't know that we necessarily had that before. So like an affirmative duty to report instances of discrimination or that sort of thing. And, and I, you know, just to, in terms of making sure that everybody is aware of that, because it does say, you know, if you fail to do so, you know, there's punishment for you, including termination, that, that everybody is aware.
So we, they went through the new Title IX training on, on vector and all staff. Where to have that done by October tenth. And I think that I, I pulled the stats on that and there was only a couple of teachers who had, or a couple of people who hadn't finished that. So and that, so that they would get it done. So.
And that's, was that an online training?
Yes. So we purchased training through the vector system that allows us to put all the mandatory training on an online platform that allows us to track it to see if it's been completed or not. And all the, they have to pass a small test at the end.
Excellent. So it looks like AC, ACA, ACCC, ACE, ACR2, PBAM. Then, I think I, this one. And the IHBCA. And there's, we had a combination of pregnancy and related medical conditions for students and then another one for teachers and staff. And those are all the ones that we have implemented and they're just looking for if there's anything that we want to review. I think, I don't have any other comments on any of those. Does anyone have any thoughts on those ones? Those are kind of the ones that we don't really have much of a say in. The other, the other ones, freshman development, we're, we're removing the school board member off of that committee just to streamline that. This one is renaming holidays in our policies in accordance with law, you know, solid legislative priorities. The graduation requirements. What's the significance of the gray highlighted and red marking?
So that was a new made policy and the school board had asked us to combine IKF and IKFR.
Right.
So the gray highlighted areas are the pieces that were combined from IKFR into IKF. However, the school board association also as part of their fall policy update had added some new items into that policy, the IKF policy. So the items that are highlighted strictly in red are from the school board association. The highlights that are gray and red are from policy IKFR. Does that make sense?
Yep. Perfect sense. And I'm assuming that the parts that are highlighted in gray and red struck out with the line is a school association edit to our listing.
Yeah.
And this already reflects the prior change that we made at the request of the guidance council. Any other thoughts or suggestions? And then minor edits to the suicide prevention response. Including the new suicide crisis line numbers. Well, it's, it's me. You want to?
I'll make a motion first, I guess, to withdraw IKF dash R. No, sorry.
We usually do that after second reading approval.
Oh, okay. So this is just for first reading, right? You don't make a motion to send it to?
Well, what we've typically done in the past is we, we sent it to second reading, at, at second reading, once it's being approved for final.
And then we withdraw. Okay.
So if we withdraw now, then we don't actually have a policy, any policy.
I was going to make it easy on myself and say AC through, and then move the remainder to second. So I didn't have to read them all, but.
You do not have to read them all.
Perfect.
We, yeah.
With the exception of IKF dash R, I make a motion to move the remainder of the list policies to second reading.
Thank you, Jasmine. Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion on those? All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, and that motion carries. Thank you again. Thank you. We are, we've been.
I'll just need somebody to swear me in.
I can handle that. Yeah, we, we appreciate your continued efforts on our behalf. Nothing under continuing business. Don't see any staff or students. Sorry. We do have staff.
Sure. They're chatting today. Sorry.
I was up too.
Up next is nominations, recommendations, resignations and school district clerk appointment. We are nominating Darren, the school district clerk.
Annual appointment.
What's that?
The annual appointment.
Yes, and how do we finalize that, whether she wants to? Are you willing, are you willing to continue to do that?
Yes.
Well, she said yes before she learned of the cut.
Then I guess we need a motion to point Sharon as the.
I make a motion to appoint Sharon Holt as clerk, where'd it go, where'd it go? School district clerk.
Thank you, gentlemen.
2024, 2025.
Thank you, Joe. All of the favors, you can probably saying aye.
Aye.
Close, extensions and that motion carries. Thank you again. We are, we've been.
I'll just need somebody to swear me in.
I can handle that. Yeah, we appreciate your continued efforts on our behalf. Nothing under continuing business. Don't see any staff or students, sorry. Do you have staff?
Sure. They're chatting today, sorry.
No, it's all right.
All right.
Love to hear.
So, Dory Whedon wanted you to know that the class 2026 collected over $500 from the Linwood community for the Metaviver charity in memory of Claire Bijou. Jen Witcher wanted you to know that some seniors and juniors have attended two college tours this fall. Ms. Witcher, Ms. Brown took the seniors to PSU at the end of September. PSU had a great presentation for the students about the different programs they offer and alternative pathways to graduation. Students learned a lot. It was a beautiful day to walk around Plymouth. In October, Ms. Witcher, Mrs. Whedon and Mrs. Brown took the seniors and some juniors to UNH for the day. It was another beautiful day to walk around the campus, great for students to see a smaller campers in Plymouth and a bigger campus in Durham. They were quite starstruck. Thank you to the administration and the school board for supporting these adventures for the students. Many seniors, for many seniors, PSU was the first campus they had walked around. Since our tour, we've had seven students accepted at PSU and a few more to UNH. Majority of seniors have already applied to many other schools and are waiting for acceptance to roll in. So it's a good time to be a senior. Heather Krill wanted you to know last Friday that she attended, well, me and others, the Bright Spot Conference at PSU. This was an opportunity for middle and high school, ELA and social studies teacher to share what works in our classrooms with the teachers in New Hampshire. Thank you for supporting professional development. This was actually a really good one. It was just facilitated by one of the ed staff at, or the English staff at PSU, but it was basically just us sharing, you know, about 15 of us, sharing lesson plans and things that had gone well. Basically each bring something. And in terms of just useful ground level, used tomorrow stuff, it was, it was really good. It was absolutely well worth spending a day on and it's at Plymouth, so it doesn't get any easier than that. So that was a really good one. Heather and Ryan Whedon also wanted to thank the school district administration and Matt Manning for flexibility with bringing up fifth graders to play middle school girls soccer. Many middle schools who have been forced to go co-ed due to lack of numbers are seeing many girls just dropping the game of soccer altogether. Fortunately, we were able to field all girls teams and we're grateful. While Ryan and Heather are stepping away from coaching middle school, they're very proud of the communication with our rec program and know we'll continue in a positive direction. Heather also wants to give a shout out to the freshman class and their advisors, Betsy Scrafford, Natasha, Janice and Jasmine. They took over running the pumpkin walk for the bridge project. 21 of 23 students in the class contributed their time in setting up, providing directions along the course or cleaning up. Thank you also to Dory Whedon and the junior class for their continued support in keeping the Metaviver fundraiser going. Next one, Kristy Duris wants you to know that Jim Pedapah's author visit was a success. He read and sang to grades K three last week. The students were engaged, singing and dancing while he played music. He also shared his writing and illustration process and answered many questions the students asked. It was a good time by all. Scholastic book fair is here. Fair set up in the library. The buzz is real. Students and staff are excited to browse and buy for themselves and others. Fair hours are Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, seven to three, Wednesday, seven to four. It's a definitely a magical time of year, apparently. In the middle, high school, middle school has been for the, has been for the annual visit to review the digital resources in the library and how they can be used. The high school schedules through this next month. In addition to the visit, she will be organizing a book tasting for the middle school and the high school, also inviting them down for a third time for the media literacy lessons. With the new quarter, PSU students are teaching the eighth grade health with Kristy's support and guidance. They are thoughtful with their lesson planning, creating relationships with students. They also work extremely well as co-teachers. Last one, Sally would like you to know that Breeline Shamberger, Colin Brophy, Claire Hernandez all participated in Kid Governor. Breeline was elected to move on. The state selected seven finalists and unfortunately she was not chosen. She was put to get, she put together a video and worked on a platform for her campaign. The fifth graders all supported her and worked hard. It was a fantastic learning experience for all of them. That's what I got from the staff tonight.
Thank you. All good stuff. All right, I don't see any community here and I don't believe we have any reason to do non-public seating. So.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Excellent, thank you, Joe. Thank you, Kevin. The, the, Paula's in favor, can you have saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. And we are adjourned.